Okay. Good evening. The date is September 6th. The time is 6:30. This is the time set aside for the regular meeting of the Board of Directors for the Northern Lebanon School District. I call this meeting to order. And I would note that because we do not have a second meeting scheduled for this month, tonight is in fact the regular meeting instead of a committee meeting. So this will be a meeting where the board votes on the agenda items. Before we get started, Director Marlowe, would you lead us in a flag salute and moment of silence?
Sure. Would everyone please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing for a moment of silence. Okay.
Thank you, Director Marlowe. Mrs. Martin, may I please have a roll call?
Yes. Buck's?
Here.
Here.
Fowler?
Present.
Zazinski?
Here.
Murray?
Here.
Fine?
Here.
Marlowe?
Here.
Erdman?
Here.
Nom?
Present.
All members present.
Great, thank you. We will move to item two of the agenda, which is adoption of tonight's agenda. All members have had an opportunity to review the agenda that has been provided and made public. Is there a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
Motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
We'll mark Mr. Erdman as the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving tonight's agenda, please state yes.
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 Any opposed? And I'm also a yes, so the motion carries. We will move to item three, which is the presentations. I do not believe we have any presentations tonight. But we will make some formal announcements. I didn't ask you initially, Director England, but would you like to read the high school students of the month?
The high school students of the month for September are Isaac England and Hope Wentling. This award is sponsored jointly by the Fredericksburg and Jonestown Lions Club, and each recipient will be recognized at a future meeting of the Lions Club.
Great, thank you. Congratulations, proud dad. The middle school student of the month for September is Elena Lawver. This award is sponsored by the Northern Lebanon County Rotary Club, and each recipient will be recognized at a future meeting of the Rotary Club. Student Board Representative is Alex Selby. He is not present tonight, but he did give a written report, and I will just read that on Alex's behalf. Hello, I was unfortunately unable to stay for today's meeting and had to leave before it starts. So in my absence, I'm writing the information I would have spoken on this note. Student council is currently planning for homecoming. We'll know what the theme will be on the ninth, at which point we'll be able to kick things into gear. Decorations, posters, anything reliant on theme. In the meantime, we're making what progress we can. A lot of student council members are disappointed with the scheduling around tailgate this year. We had booked the day we did at the end of last year, and were told there would be only practices that day. There was, however, several games, which caused quite a few people we know who were interested to not come. Sorry for my absence. Student Board Representative Alex Selby will formally thank Mr. Selby on the record for his report. Much appreciated. Item number four is the superintendent report. Dr. Messinger?
Yeah, I will just say it is disappointing with schedules. I know that one of the conflicts, Sasquatch Hana, I guess there's a shortage of officials for football. And I know that some of the mid-pen teams have moved to Thursday night games, and they moved that football game. And I know that was going to be a pre kind of celebration of that, but it didn't work out. So on as far as my things go, I'm going to start tonight with handing it over to Kelly. She has an introduction that we wanted to do.
Okay, so our social worker Kara Rhodes is here. She's just gonna wave. Kara hit the ground running when she came. She's had to do a number of intakes for our families that have been displaced. And the best part about that is, you know, in the past counselors would do it. It would come to me. I had a hard time setting families up with resources, but Kara's been able to follow up with families, work out different situations for them. We've just had a higher number of intakes. She's also working on just connecting with community resources. She set up power packs for the elementary schools and secondary schools for our students. And then she's going to work with me on the county mental health grant for more services for our students. So it's exciting that she's here. Welcome, Kara.
Are we keeping you busy yet? Okay, good. All right. In addition to that, I know that we had talked about some items for across the street. One of the things was getting an appraisal. Leanne's got some information on that for us.
Okay, so I know one of the questions we discussed was how much would an appraisal on these properties cost? And it is going to be more than I had anticipated. So I wanted to share that with you guys and maybe discuss that a little bit before we went ahead. We are probably looking at around $2,000 to $5,000 to have both properties done. So they, it's not quite like a residential appraisal where they just look at comps and go from there. They kind of have to do the highest and best use, which is to figure out if the land went and became a strip mall or became a different way of zone, what would be the most profitable way? And then that's how they appraise the property. So they have to kind of do multiple layers of an appraisal, to put it simple. So it's timely for the appraisers to do that. So that's why it's so expensive. So we can kind of discuss that if we still want to go that route. And in the meantime, I did reach out to a fellow real estate agent in the area and the listing agent, and asked him to please prepare for us some comps that he used to kind of justify and what he used to come up with the price that he listed it for. So they are working on that, and I will have that information to share with you. I thought that would at least get us started in understanding where the pricing came from and some of the uses for the property.
Thank you. When we get to new business, we can discuss. We wouldn't have, we wouldn't need a motion necessarily, but I need feedback from the board. I'm assuming we still want to go ahead with it, but I don't want to make that assumption without hearing from the board. So we get to do, that's okay.
One other important aspect of this is that they're, the appraisers are super busy right now. And I kind of told them that we would want it to be done within a month, and they did say that that would be hard to reach as well. One individual said he wouldn't even take it with a month deadline. So we might be looking at it like a two-month turnaround on this as well.
Okay.
Just a heads up for that, for once we make our decision and give them the go-ahead.
All right. Thank you. You know, another thing I think that's come up so far this year I wanted to discuss is transportation. I know that I've shared with the board that there's been some, we've had some turnover in the position, have a new person that has started in that position, excited about that. I think she is going to do a good job over time. However, we had put her into a very, very difficult situation. And on top of that, DB Fisher was down a person and probably their most knowledgeable person. And that has caused some issues as well. I think the two big things that we need to work through. There's a East Hanover, I think we're having some timing problems and potentially, do we get a final answer on an additional bus yet? Okay. Looking at an additional bus there to help with that. And then in addition to that, Bus 15 at the secondary level is a little fuller than we'd like it to be. So working on moving kids off of Bus 15 onto other buses. The rest of the items right now are more ironing out timing and specific bus stops for people. They're working through those on an individual basis, but that's that's always a topic at the beginning of the year. I wanted to briefly talk just to you about publicly share that our goals for this year are going to be focused around school culture and student behavior. And when I say culture, that's all-inclusive and including for us, an academic component of that. We will be communicating that publicly to the community through our Do North, which we are furiously working on to get out along with several other articles in that. But that should be, we should be wrapping that up in the next couple of weeks, and that'll hit the community. And then, as we did last year, there'll be a presentation about progress on those goals. And one thing I did realize is that while we had an exec session where we shared the end of the year progress on goals, I want to change that this year and actually present that in our probably June. We never had our July meeting, but probably June then meeting, so we can kind of give a feel for that at the end of the year publicly as well. Finally, and I will tell you that I don't typically do this, but I am going to do it tonight. As you know, there was a concern that was brought up last week that I've spent some time on. I've been in communication with you about, but I took the opportunity to write a statement about this. And I did so mainly because the topic itself is a concern from the standpoint of student confidentiality and involving individual student that I just feel I need to be very careful in what I share. So in order to make sure that I am not breaking any student confidentiality, I wrote out my thoughts. Last week, a concern about bathroom usage by a transgender student was shared with the school board and myself. I want to be clear that I take student confidentiality very seriously and therefore will not discuss the specific circumstances surrounding the student. Having said that, I understand that there are those that would like to talk in more general terms about how Northern Lebanon addresses this situation. Frankly, we have not dealt with this topic often here at NLL, and at least in recent history, it has not been discussed at a public school board meeting. Therefore, there is no current policy nor written procedure that addresses overall bathroom and locker room usage in this context. Though the board has sought legal guidance on this, and I believe is willing to explore policy options. Past precedent would be to have a discussion with each individual student. While I am not privy to the individual student conversations, I am sure that these discussions range from continuing to use the same bathroom, to using an individual bathroom, to access to all bathrooms. Currently, when determining a specific plan, consideration needs to be given to the validity of the request as well as legal guidance, which we have thus far attempted to follow. To be clear, at this time, no student has asked to utilize all bathrooms in the building. Having said that, I do understand that even minimal usage may cause other students to have specific concerns about their own bathroom or locker room usage. It is important that options for those concerns are also discussed. Although we have not experienced many occurrences of this, it does not make it less controversial. I am aware of some creative solutions, especially through renovation, that minimize these concerns, and I intend to research those carefully in order to best support all of our students, and will be reporting to you about that in the future. And that is the end of my report.
Great, thank you, Dr. Messinger. Are there any questions for Dr. Messinger on his report?
I have one quick follow-up question to the land assessment. Leanne, you mentioned that the assessment could take, could cost between $2,000 and $5,000. Is, is that wide range going to be based on the actual time that it would take a person to do this? Or is that some people charge $5,000 and some people charge two, and we would pick one of them?
Right. So that depends if we want both properties done as well. And I had one that I spoke to who said, you know, he would probably charge $2,000 to do one, and then if we went with him for the second one as well, he would give us a little break on that one. So that would be our lower end. And then I had one individual who said to do each property, his prices start at $2,800. So I figured he's going to be obviously higher than $5,000, but I would obviously ask him to give us a break if we went with two as well. So that's where I came up with that range.
Thank you.
That help?
Yes, it does.
Thank you. Any other questions? No? Okay, moving on to item number five. This is old business. Is there any old business for the good of the order? Hearing none, we will move to item six, which is the public comment portion of our meeting. In accordance with Policy 903, all individuals wishing to participate in tonight's meeting were asked to register their intent with the Board Secretary by 3:00 PM today, unless specifically advertised differently, which we did not. Participants must be recognized by the presiding officer and must preface their comments by an announcement of their name and group affiliation, if applicable. Each statement may be made by a participant. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to four minutes duration. No participant may speak more than once on the same topic unless all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard. All statements tonight shall be directed to the presiding officer, that is me, and no participant may address or question school directors individually. With that, Mrs. Martin, I understand that we have one item for public comment. Is that correct?
That's great.
And I believe that is Mr. Troy Williams. Is Mr. Williams here? Welcome. Mr. Williams, please, before you begin, just state your full name, please.
Troy Williams.
Thank you. You have four minutes.
Thank you. Before I begin, I just want to thank Mr. Messinger for his words on the, or his statement that he gave on the transgender issue. And that's really what my comments have to do about tonight. And first of all, I just want to say that my family is still relatively new to the Northern Lebanon School District. We are beginning our second full year in the district with both of our children. And during our time with this district, we have come to appreciate the overall efforts of the school board and of the administration, as well as the teachers and the staff. And their efforts to make Northern Lebanon a safe place for every student to come and to be educated and to enjoy extracurricular activities. And granted, there are some, there are some individuals within the school district that do not share this opinion because of some matters prior to our coming into the district. So I'm just, I'm just sharing our experience thus far with Northern Lebanon School District, and it's been very positive to this point. I'm not used to reading off of my iPhone, so I apologize. Our positive perception of the school district is what has led me to become a little more active in the school district as a whole. And I'm thankful for the opportunities that I've had to this point. And I'm also looking forward to future opportunities to help build a positive image. As Mr. Messinger alluded to earlier, building that positive image within the Lebanon, Northern Lebanon School District. Dealing with social issues of our day is no easy task, and it is especially difficult, it is especially more difficult in the setting of a public school district where you have various groups of people with differing opinions and beliefs coming together on a daily basis. I will admit, my Christian faith in Jesus Christ leads me to not agree with the idea of transgenderism. However, my faith in Jesus Christ does call for me to allow every person to pursue their personal beliefs and personal freedoms and choices without judgment. Additionally, I want my children to be afforded the opportunity to enjoy their personal freedoms and rights and choices without judgment, and also without fear and anxiety. My request and my hope is that, as this administration and the school board determine a policy relative to the transgender concerns that have been raised and accommodations that are being requested, if any, that the rights and freedoms of the majority of the students be of the utmost concern. Yes, making necessary accommodations for any student should be made who require them, but please make sure, as much as you possibly can, that the final policy affords every student the assurance of safety and privacy and that their personal rights and freedoms are not ignored. Thank you for your time and your consideration, and may the God of all wisdom grant you all, grant you the administration and the school board the wisdom and the discernment that only he can provide to help you in your policy decisions and respect to your leadership roles. Thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Williams, for your considerate comments. Given that there is no other public comment, we will move to item seven. And this is, this will take us through item 14. These are the items for board action tonight. It should be noted that public notice was given for this meeting in accordance with Act 84 of 1986. By notice of the President, the following action requires a voice of vote. All votes in favor shall be stated with an "aye" or "yes." All votes opposed shall be stated with a "nay" or "no." All members abstaining shall state "I abstain" when prompted. The votes will be recorded in the minutes as a unanimous roll call vote, unless there are any votes in opposition or abstention. If necessary, I may subsequently call for a roll call vote to be recorded in the minutes on any of these items. We will move first to item eight, and this is just our typical monthly items. Dr. Messinger?
Yeah, I'll do 8.13.3. It's our approval of minutes, our student activity count, and our cash disbursements. And it's my understanding that there's a glitch in the summary report that we need to correct and resubmit. It's showing a full year instead of, no, that doesn't have anything to do with the payment vouchers. It's just an attachment for your information. So it doesn't have anything to do with the vote necessarily, but we will update you and get that to you.
And that's on item 8.3?
Yeah, it's the, well, it's the attachment underneath there about the August budget summary.
Okay, great.
Or the, yeah, the budget to expense summary.
Any questions on items 8.1 through 8.3? Is there a motion to adopt items 8.1 through 8.3?
Motion to adopt items 8.1, 3.3 as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of adopting items 8.1 through 8.3, please indicate with a yes or an "aye."
Yes.
Any opposed? I'm also a yes. That motion carries. We'll move to item nine, Budget and Finance.
9.1 is our JPO MOU. That's Annual London County Juvenile Probation Unit. 9.2 is a simple adjustment. This was approved in August. However, we had a name change. We had a gentleman that was going to do it, and then we, that didn't, that fell through, and we have another person from Solian who's gonna do our school psychology work until we make a permanent hire. The contract is exactly the same. It's just a name change. Our annual interpreter contract is also up for you on 9.3. And then 9.4 is actually something we're trying this year with Effective School Solutions. We have that, we have grant money of $102,67,000 total, but that included safety. So half of that was to be utilized for mental health slash learning loss activities. And so we're going to, this Effective Solutions is going to provide some Tier Two and Tier Three, just Tier Two, Tier Two support for our students. Unfortunately, they're only in, they said one building, but we convinced them to do Fredericksburg and Jonestown, which is, which are two bigger elementary buildings. So they're going to help provide some supports there, and we're going to use grant money to fund that for this year.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions on item nine? Hearing none, is there a motion to adopt items 9.1 through 9.4?
Motion to adopt 9.1 through 9.4.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of adopting items 9.1 through 9.4, please indicate with a yes or an "aye."
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? I'm also a yes. That motion carries. We'll move to item 10, Buildings and Grounds.
I just have one, one request for building usage by the Jonestown Dance Studio. This is a December dance rehearsal that they do.
Any questions? Is there a motion to adopt item 10.1? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of adopting item 10.1, please indicate with a yes or an "aye."
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? I'm also a yes. Item 10.1 carries. I'll move to 11, Extracurricular.
Yes, one is just a night update to the high school, middle school co-curricular positions for 2022-23. And then also annually, we need to approve the fee schedule. I did make an adjustment to the fee schedule. We added an annual fee for certain organizations. Not, it's not specific organizations, but it would, certain organizations will benefit from it. For instance, the Viking Youth Basketball Association uses it during basketball season, and there's a fee, but sometimes they'll run a clinic in the fall, or they'll run an open gym in the spring, or they'll do something in the summer. And instead of charging them for each individual usage, we would charge them just an annual fee, and as long as there's availability, they'd be able to use that. Custodian, if there's any custodial fees, they still apply. If we have to open it up or do something with custodians, then they would be charged for that. But I thought that would benefit our youth organizations that use it on a more frequent basis.
Questions on item 11?
When does this go into act? After the board approves it. So for this year.
Any other questions?
A quick question on that last item. Do school-related activities always have kind of first dibs on use of facilities?
Yes.
Okay.
And even if an outside group has it and something comes up, canceled game that needs to be rescheduled, we kick them off.
Okay.
Any further questions? Okay, good questions. Is there a motion to adopt items 11.1 and 11.2?
So move?
Is there a second? Thank you. All in favor, pardon me, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of adopting 11.1 and 11.2, please indicate with a yes or an "aye."
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. And moving on to item 12, Curriculum.
Yeah, I'll go through these individually. I think there's some discussion before I move, I can move through all three, but I'll move, wanted time to give opportunity for the discussion. The first one is, I told you in August I would bring, we would work on the feedback and design a policy for electronic devices. We have a draft for tentative approval for that. I did get a concern. I believe it is a legitimate concern. And it is about, and I'm gonna be the readers. What's the term for the readers, Michelle? Yeah, the Kindle. There are Kindle devices, such as the Fire, that can take pictures, get on the internet, receive texts, and those devices fall under the definition at the top of that definition. However, they're also just Kindle readers that all they do is allow you to read the book. And so they do not fall under the definition at the top, and therefore they would be okay. I I would recommend we just take off the examples. It's pretty clear in the policy what they can, what the devices can and cannot do that qualify. And I believe you could just remove that without any issue. There was also, do you want to talk about, we're constantly talking about technology, smartwatches, Fitbits, whatever else is out there, I don't know. And I think the approach that we currently have mentally is to, if a child is wearing a watch, they're wearing a watch. And unless it becomes this, you know, the buzz and the constant, clearly you're getting text message after text message after text message, that that would be able to be addressed by the teacher. However, just to have it on wouldn't necessarily trigger, oh my goodness, that's a, you know, that's a smart watch that needs to go. So just trying to take a common sense approach to that. Did I miss anything?
Nope, I think you covered it well. Just to kind of recap, I just wanted to say thank you to all of the admin, as well as any teachers that interacted. I know this is a difficult policy to put together. And I just talked with Dr. Messinger today with the concerns of, that I think we should remove the term digital reader and any of those examples, because I think it's important that we encourage reading in any form and carrying a Kindle to school is much easier than carrying the big Harry Potter book or some of those big series books. And so I think that's appropriate for our students to be able to access when the time allows. And then I had the concern about students, if they have a Fitbit to monitor their activity, which I think is good and healthy, but Fitbits have, many of them have the capability of receiving texts. And so I was concerned if this means that students can no longer have those activity watches with those capabilities. So just to summarize, I think we can flush that out. Um, so just to summarize, I think we can flush that out a little bit in the details in our wording um, to make this even more clear of a policy that we can continue to stand on today and moving into the future. Thank you.
And what I'll do after, uh, assuming if we've tentatively approved, what I'll do though is I'll make those changes, get them out to you quickly so that we have the month to kind of fine tune as till we get to final approval.
Great, thank you. And thank you, Director Bux. Are there any other questions uh, for Dr. Messinger regarding uh, curriculum? Hearing none, is there a motion to adopt items twelve point one through twelve point?
Well, I didn't, I didn't.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're just don't want it at the time.
I can do the rest now.
I apologize. I apologize.
Discussion.
Thank you.
Okay, twelve point two is the annual uh, Accelerate Education Course List. And you know, something that I think um, we'll do in the future is we will, we will, there are some courses now that we have developed. As you know, in elementary school, we're using our own curriculum. We're not using Accelerate um, curriculum. Um, I'm not gonna say that it's never a possibility, so it's probably not horrible to approve the entire course catalog. However, um, I know that Mr. Bruce is working on taking the courses that we're gonna offer through Accelerate and actually put them in, putting them into our, our secondary school course catalog so that it, it becomes one place for all of that. So, but in the meantime, uh, that is the list of accelerate classes um, that we would uh, annually approve. And then finally, the uh, London CTC Advisory Board, we're asking to approve Jenny Balmer uh, from the Ag Department as a representative on the CTC Local Advisory Board. That's actually a requirement that they need for Ag. So she's gonna get to go and, and help with the minutes and, and be a part of that. So that, now I got it.
Okay, now are there any questions on items twelve point two and twelve point three? Yeah, hearing none, is there a motion to adopt items twelve point one through twelve point three? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? And I would just note again that item twelve point one, the tentative adoption of the policy is just a tentative adoption. And as Dr. Messinger indicated, um, prior to next month's meeting, we can work on refining that language before we put it up for a final vote. So please do pay attention to that draft that comes through. Um, with that said, are there any uh, other comments after mine? Hearing none, is there uh, um, all in favor of adopting twelve point one through twelve point three, please indicate with a yes or an I?
Yes.
Any opposed? I'm also a yes. Motion carries. We'll move to item thirteen, human relations.
Okay, thirteen point one is just the list of substitutes. As you know, that happens probably every meeting that we add uh, substitutes. And there are some new ones on there. Thirteen point two, there's some redesignations of those three employees. And then also uh, the ratification and approval of the employment still stood there for you. Uh, and thirteen point three, uh, are resignations that have occurred since our last meeting, the end of August, the beginning of September. It's been a busy month as we have people that have some health issues and people that when it gets close to school, don't wanna give up summer breaks and wanna stay home. And good for them if they can do that. Um, I know that school districts in general have had a lot of turnover this year in August. I think that's as indicator of things to come uh, because uh, there's, there's positions available. If you wanna be closer to home or you wanna be um, you know, you, you're looking to relocate, there's positions, there's positions out there right now. And there's some folks doing that. Uh, for instance, we have one gone to Ohio and uh, um, good for them. Um, but we've, we've managed to uh, to hire quite a few people and, and get them started as well. Uh, thirteen point four is some additional mentors uh, for you to approve. Uh, thirteen point five is our annual hourly job title classification chart uh, for you. Uh, thirteen point six is our annual credit column movement. Those individuals have moved columns. Uh, and thirteen point seven is a job description for you to approve for uh, receiving clerk slash transportation assistant. We actually had a job description for receiving clerk. Um, we edited it uh, and added some transportation responsibilities there uh, to help back up and, and a few other things, but we were updating that um, that job description. And that's it.
Questions regarding items thirteen point one through thirteen point seven? I have a motion to adopt those items for approval.
Motion to adopt thirteen one, point one through thirteen point seven.
There a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving thirteen point one through thirteen point seven, please indicate with a yes or an I?
Yes.
Any opposed? I'm also a yes. Motion carries. And the last item for voting tonight.
I'm sorry, I abstained from thirteen point one due to conflict of interest. Otherwise, I support this.
Thank you, Director England. Appreciate it. Uh, last item for voting tonight is item fourteen. I think I can cover this one. So this is the annual PSBA Officers Elections. Uh, we will be actually uh, voting to approve the names that are listed, given that um, there are only sufficient names for each uh, available slot unless there is any opposition. Of course, if there is any opposition, please state so on the record. Is there any questions for uh, for me? Or um, uh, I guess at this point, uh, Mrs. Martin on item fourteen? Motion to adopt item fourteen point one?
Motion to adopt fourteen point one.
Thank you. I was gonna jump in, but I'm not allowed to. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of adopting item fourteen point one, please indicate with a yes or an I?
Yes.
Any opposed? I'm also a yes. Hearing no opposition. Uh, item fourteen point one carries. We'll move on to the information items. Dr. Messinger?
Uh, yes, a letter A is our LVC Fall placements. Our students at the junior level placements are all listed for you there. Uh, London County, uh, London Valley College students for their teaching semester also is listed for there uh, under letter B. Our Safety and Security Committee members are listed for you under uh, letter C. And our annual building list with uh, all, all recent uh, changes uh, are also listed there for your information.
Great, thank you. Any questions on item fifteen? Hearing none, we'll move on to item sixteen. This is the reports from our representatives. Uh, Change Order Committee, uh, Director Bux, anything to report?
Um, I usually don't say too many details about the change orders. Um, all of that information is on the website. Uh, but it, we've been a little busier the past uh, couple times we've met. Um, on August fifteenth, we had, I think, four change orders and they equaled out. We, we won some on some of them. We got some credits. Uh, but we also um, had to shell out a little more on some of them. Uh, but it even, it got closed evening out. I can't read my notes. Um, but in the, the past week, uh, August twenty-ninth, we got hit a little harder. Uh, there were some electrical revisions that we had to make or not had to, but we chose to make uh, because it seemed like the smart thing in the long term. Uh, we also had to um, invest about twenty-five thousand dollars for additional asphalt uh, down at the football field. Uh, but even with those additional costs, where we are still within, I forget the wording, Dr. Messinger, are, are, what's that term?
Contingency.
Contingency.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, but so hopefully it, it calms down again uh, in two weeks or next week.
Yeah, I don't know that there's any fieldhouse. Uh, there's any, I, I think we've hit all big fieldhouse changes. We're getting up, I'm gonna talk about that a little bit in new business, but we're getting very close to the end. So.
Great. Thank you. Excellent report. Uh, Career Technology, Director Klein, anything this month?
Uh, nothing to report. There, there is a report attached to board docs if you guys would like to check out the minutes from August.
Great, thank you. Um, IU thirteen, Director Murray, anything to report?
Um, the only thing I wanna report is just that the IU has spent a tremendous amount of time forming their vision and mission statement now that Matt Stem is at the, the head of um, the IU and uh, they just did a tremendous job. I mean, I don't wanna take twenty minutes out of our meeting to present everything that they presented. Um, but it just, it's just continues to be an outstanding organization and I'm glad to be partnering with them and, and be a part of their board and see the amazing things they do. So I, they're always a resource for us in many, many ways. So glad they're there for us.
Great, thank you. Good report. Uh, Legislative Liaison, Director Kimball Tzatzinsky, anything?
Nothing to report.
Okay. And last, PSBA Liaison, Director Bux?
Um, I'll keep it short, but I did just wanna point out in the latest PSBA bulletin that uh, hopefully you received. Um, I just noticed there, they do highlight what they call champions of public education. Uh, these are state legislators across the state of PA that have put forth legislature to, or potential uh, bills to, that will benefit education. Many of these do center around charter schools and charter school costs. Um, and I just thought I might highlight um, Rep Senator Judy Schwanke, um, who represents our neighbors in Berks County. Um, she has put forth a bill that would relieve school districts that provide their own cyber education programs like NL from financial responsibility for resident students who enroll in a cyber charter school. So that would save school districts million, and taxpayers millions of dollars every year. Um, so there are people um, in Harrisburg fighting uh, for, for public ed.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Bux. Appreciate it. Um, that's it for the reports. Uh, item seventeen is new business. We do have one item for new business to discuss uh, this evening. Dr. Messinger?
Yeah, and actually I'm gonna add to that. I ju- uh, one I wanted to update on the uh, football. Um, we do have a home football game. They were, uh, today was scheduled to uh, do the blacktop. And that blacktop cost actually comes out of the new bleachers where they had to tear up some blacktop in order to get the new bleachers installed. If you've been down there or you've seen the new bleachers, uh, they're nice. They're, they're very nice. Things don't fall through. That's very nice. Um, I saw kids doing uh, uh, running them up and down the other day, so that was neat to see. Um, but uh, at the same time, we had two options basically. Replace, uh, replace it, take it out, replace it while they were doing the work, or we could patch it. And we talked about that. Um, it was not going to be a nice appearance to patch it. And in addition to that, in a few years, probably, you know how the patches are at blacktop, we're probably gonna be tearing it up and redoing it anyway. So we're gonna redo it now. Uh, there was already an area that was gonna be new. Um, they were supposed to blacktop today. They were supposed to do some concrete work today. The last wall has been poured at the base of it. They were gonna start on the backside. Um, and then the goal was to be doing the, the front part. Um, so while I don't think the patio will be done for Friday, Friday, uh, there, there was quite a bit of walking space that they were going to clean up and, and have done today. However, it rained. And so I do not know where they are. I did not get a chance to talk with them today. Uh, we'll get an update tomorrow. Um, but I know that they're working very hard to make that very presentable for Friday night, even if it's not fully operational. We are still waiting on electrical panels. To the best of my knowledge, the one they said was shipped is not here yet. Uh, where if it is here, we didn't hear any update on it yet. So um, but uh, we're gonna give it a shot on Friday. We do have food trucks coming. Uh, uh, the concession stand is very, very nice, but not, not ready to open. Um, but uh, we're gonna roll with it and, and let her, and watch our kids Friday night. Uh, the other thing was that appraisal before I get into the school uh, reconfiguration that we talked about. Um, you know, basically, yeah, just wanna, any comments, if anybody wants to comment? I mean, I think our plan would be to pursue it. Um, but if there's any comments, I was curious if the board had any thoughts on that.
So we'll just open for comments. At this point, uh, the board's vote is to move forward with uh, assessing the value of those pieces of property, which would um, technically include appraisals. So we'll open this up for comments, would ask directors to comment as you deem fit. And then before anyone speaks twice, we'll uh, we'll have an opportunity for everyone to speak initially. If there's, if there appears to be um, significant opposition to moving forward the appraisals, then we'll take a vote at that point um, to essentially.
And that, we would have to check if we could, I don't, it's not on this to take a vote. Right now, we, we would move ahead based on. But I can delay it till we can put it on and take a vote, but I don't know that we could put it on and take a vote tonight.
Right, the vote would be to move it for next month.
Yeah.
Out of the agenda. Um, so we'll open it for comments, discussion?
Yeah, I don't think uh, the cost should, should change it. I think it's still a piece of land that's strategic to the district. I think we have uh, short-term and long-term needs for it, so I, I think we have to explore it.
Any other comments? Okay, hearing none, I think the assessment is that we'll move forward as we have previously voted.
Okay. Um, and the final thing, what that is listed there is school reconfiguration. Um, this is actually in reference to the new building. Uh, obviously, um, the grade level spans will change next year. Uh, sixth grade moving over to the new elementary building, uh, which, which is going to be a K to six there, a seven through twelve here. We have a couple of choices. We have to do some work with PDE uh, because of the reconfiguration. Um, and because of that, we, there's some paperwork for, for us to take care of. But one of the things that we need to discuss and, and I can, you can think about this. We don't need to discuss it tonight. Uh, you can certainly give any initial reactions, but we have two options for reconfiguration in this building. We can have a secondary school that is seven to twelve, or we can have a middle school, which would be seventh and eighth and a, and a high school that's nine through twelve. Operationally, I am not suggesting that we change anything. As a matter of fact, with sixth grade moving, uh, it creates probably a little more of a middle school um, experience with some flexibility. Although um, we'll finally have some empty rooms and I don't know that we've fully uh, figured out how we'll utilize that space. That's good. We don't currently have any empty rooms. Even if we get a new math coach, we're, we're putting up a wall and putting them in a room with someone else. Um, so that's good. Um, there are some benefits to us to have it just be a secondary school from a budgeting perspective. Um, from a paperwork perspective, uh, with our reports that go through PIMS. Uh, I don't think either option drastically, uh, doesn't change um, really much in the way we handle anything else. There's still be middle school sports. There'd still be high school sports. Um, I can see, I can see rationale for both. Um, although I'd probably lean toward the secondary school uh, piece of it. Um, you know, I don't think we wanna ever get away from the mindset that seventh and eighth grade and ninth through twelfth is a middle school and high school. Uh, I would still suggest we name it that in terms of how we refer to it. Um, but I do think from a paperwork standpoint, from a, a reporting standpoint, there's some, some ease that comes with the secondary. So I can, um, you know, next time Brooke is here, I can ask her to chime in a little bit more on that. Uh, I can send you the information that PDE has on it. Um, but it's something we need to talk about so that we're not sitting here in May trying to figure it out, cause there is, there are things that need to be done. So I'm, I'm suggesting you think about that. If you have thoughts, reach out. Uh, I will uh, gather some of that other information and let Brooke talk about it the next time she joins us. Uh, but just something to get your minds spinning uh, as we move forward.
Questions or comments?
Um, I have a question, just to kind of make sure I'm understanding this correctly. Is the terminology something that is needed mostly for PDE?
Yeah.
And it doesn't really affect us operationally so much or educationally?
No. It does, uh, you, you have some thoughts on that. Brad's done some investigation for me on this.
I would say that there is an operational impact in, in the way that systems operate behind the scenes, but your day-to-day building operations, no. For example, student scheduling is done currently in two different buildings in Power School. If we go state and request that we're one building for state reporting purposes, then scheduling happens in one building in Power School. It doesn't have a functional difference to the student, but it does operationally in the way the systems behind the scenes work. Um, since budgeting perspective, we already are reporting as a single building.
Okay, ours, America, we aren't accounting provides a lot here.
So in other words, if we were two thousand dollars in supplies right now, we have to, okay, this percentage of it is middle school, this percentage of it is high school. If middle school uses more than their allotment, we have to move money from high school to middle school where we wouldn't have to do that. Uh, another example, Mr. Reese is a middle school and high school teacher. So right now, in order to see his schedule, I click on Mr. Reese and it'll say middle school. And I'll click on schedule in Power School and it will show his Power School classes for middle school, but it will not show his entire schedule because the other are high school. So I have to go up, click on. Not that any of that is the end of the world. It isn't, but from a simplicity standpoint, I, I will give uh, our PIMS people, Wendy Reardon, and I know Linda's learning some of it too. It's a big job and anything we can do to make their job a little easier is probably beneficial for them. But we do it now, so it's not the end of the world if we keep it that way either.
Are there any negatives that, that you guys can see with it?
The biggest negative I see is just the idea that we're going to treat middle school as, as, treat the building as one entity, which is not the case. But I, there's a perception there potentially that I, I remember back to the campus model concept that did not go over very well. We are not suggesting that. However, again, this is, this is operationally behind the scenes, some adjustments, so.
Yeah. You indicated we'd still refer to it locally as middle school and high school.
Yes.
So no, no problem with doing that, even if we move it to this, so.
I do not believe so, but we'll confirm it with Brooke.
Would, would separating students be a priority? Like logistically, it seems like it would be much easier to do it as one building, I get that. But would we still, if we do it as one building, would we still want to try to make it a priority to keep seventh and eighth? Kind of have separate.
I think it's a priority, but I also think it's unavoidable to have some mixing. I mean, in 1987, when I graduated, or, okay, I don't know what year I got to seventh grade. But whenever I got to seventh grade, I was over in the high school for some classes. We walked over to the band hall, we had high, we had caf, cafeteria, there's one cafeteria, there was one gym. There was mixing in 1987, and there's mixing today. We have eighth graders that take high school classes because they're on a more advanced track. And they would go sometimes to the high school for those courses. We have a couple of teachers that teach both middle school and high school classes. And therefore, we sometimes have high school kids go to those teachers. So there's always going to be some mix. It would be not, it would not be financially wise of us to have a completely separate middle school and high school with separate faculty, completely from middle school and separate. Then you start to run into that problem of small, a small building that's not efficient like we have. I mean, that's part of the reason why we build an elementary school. So there will always be some crossover, I don't, unless we grow exponentially, you know, at some point in time.
Any other questions or comments? So Dr. Messinger, when would you anticipate that we need to have a final decision on this again?
Well, I'd like to complete the paperwork toward the end of this year. It's not due until, or at least get started on the paperwork. It's not due until July, but with the end of, with how, I know how that goes. You, you say, oh, we'll do it in the spring and then, you know, it gets busy and, and the end of the year creeps up. And before you know it, I'm, I'm doing it on the last day. So I don't want to do that. I'd prefer to, to tackle it over the next two or three months in terms of discussion and then go ahead and fill everything out.
Okay, great.
Oh, I will also add to that, we have to have a clo, we have to have a building, a closing discussion at well, as well. And I'm hoping we can attach it to a board meeting, but there has to be a public meeting on whenever you close a building. And since we will be closing four buildings at the end of the year, we'll have to tackle that this year as well.
Okay, before we adjourn, I would just note for the board dates to remember. As I stated at the outset of tonight's meeting, we do not currently have a meeting scheduled for next Tuesday. However, we are going to hold next Tuesday's evening time for a potential board workshop. And we'll, we'll send some communications between now and Tuesday, so the topics of that workshop. But those will be for board education type items for the district. But again, there is no board meeting for next Tuesday. The other dates to remember, to be aware of, are also listed in item 19.1. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn tonight's board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please indicate with a yes or an I.
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion carries, this meeting is adjourned, thank you very much.
Thanks for looking out for me.